And.
You know, the shortness, right? Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the town upon a public hearing on draft bylaws. Uh, May thirteenth at six oh three P M. Um, we're gonna let Rebecca read off. The sections, please go ahead Rebecca. Can't hear you on here. No.
Yeah, the sound cut out entirely. So the last thing we heard was just as you were introducing Rebecca. Oh, I hear you Angie.
No.
I can hear you Megan. We could talk to each other.
No.
No. Is the speaker muted? I know there's a mute button on it.
Yeah.
Yep, I can hear you.
That is really. Alright. Let me try again. I'm gonna read the um. The table, just let me know if I cut out, okay? I'm gonna read the topics of the table contents, okay? Compliance with the bylaw, access, existing small lots, non-conforming uses, non-complying structures, district requirements, um, land use regulations, there's also a land use matrix, planned unit development, more than one residential building on a parcel, um, referral to state departments, administrator and municipal panels, um, categories of approval, so that involves things like zoning permits, conditional use and site plan approvals. Um, section five is zoning district reg- regulations, uses not requiring a permit, rural residence, residential district number two, rural residential district number one, the village district, industrial districts, forest district. Uh, and then number six is flood hazard overlay districts, purpose and special flood hazard areas, development classifications and permit requirements, development standards, um, application requirements, referrals, variances, compliance and records and enforcement. The next section is subdivision regulations, which has purpose applicability, major and minor subdivisions, subdivision design criteria, um, boundary line adjustments, recording of subdivision plots, administration um, of doing subdivision work. The next section is special regulations. These are earth products removal, off-street parking, mobile home and travel trailer occupancy, mobile home park regulations, protection of streams and drainage water bodies, prohibition of the disposal of hazardous wastes, clean fill performance standards, uh, that also has in uh, subsections of water quality and solid waste disposal, things like that, inoperable motor vehicles and scrapyards, signs, wind energy facilities, telecommunications towers and antennas, wetlands, development on steep slopes, and the last section is interpretation validity and amendments, which includes the interpretation about bylaws, validity of the bylaws, and any potential amendments to the bylaws, and that is all the sections of the draft bylaws. And here we go.
Okay, thank you very much Rebecca. Alright, so anybody have anything to add? Before we open up the public comment?
And I suppose we just select any comments that we uh, we'll just make them during public comment, correct?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Alright, so then I'd like to open up to public comment, please Megan. Remember please to state your full name, please. Please raise your hand. Megan, is there anybody out there?
No, there's no one raising their hand.
I can't see that far away.
No, there's no one raising their hand.
Okay. So. Go ahead Bob, if you have a comment.
Um, I do, I I wanted to point out a couple of areas of this, um, um, uh, and of course I need to dig into more detail on it. But on on one of them, I think the uh, the junk ordinance, uh, the not the junk ordinance, we didn't have one of those. But the uh, the junk car seems overly restrictive to me. If I'm reading it correctly, if your car is not registered for thirty days, uh, then you then you have to put up a fence or or you're in violation, or uh, there's there needs to be some remediation, you I suppose you could be fined. That seems overly restrictive to me. Uh, and it's that's for any town highway or state road. And I think there's probably a good compromise in there somewhere. I agree that uh, you know, uh, I'm not disagreeing that uh, that we need to make uh, you know, make pound look nice. Um, but that just seems really overly restrictive.
Page is that on Bob, do you know?
Um, oh, let's see, uh, I'm sorry, I saw it in the uh, I read it earlier and I I don't remember what page it was on.
I think it's in the fifties, I remember reading it. So this is, these are new bylaws, correct? These aren't what?
No, these are the draft.
These are the draft new bylaws. And the old one isn't it? Isn't it? To have three unregistered vehicles?
You know Mike? What the? I I don't know, no, I don't know what it is. Be honest with you.
Bob, do you know what the um?
Current regulation is, I'm not, I'm not sure what it was, but I know we uh, we were considering a hazardous waste and junk ordinance. Uh, uh, and and didn't follow through with it. So um, I I don't know what the previous one was, but I do have.
Okay, so then we need to look it up.
So I can, would you like me to redo what it says now in the draft, so people can hear it? You wanna hear the draft?
I don't know.
Well, I have it.
Oh, okay.
No, I have it.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
The microphone, I see the microphone, no, it's okay.
Okay, so the.
What the draft reads, and then maybe while I'm reading this, if someone look up the um. What what the present. Um, I don't know, Megan, can you do that possibly?
I I'm look, I'm trying to look it up now.
Okay, so here's what the draft says. Um, this is inoperable motor vehicles and scrapyards. No junk or inoperable motor vehicle without valid registration and or inspection may be stored on any lot except by a licensed and permitted dealership or repair business for a period in excess of thirty days where it is visible from a state or town highway. Such vehicle may not be stored except within a building or concealed by fencing, except that one utility vehicle in running condition may be kept that does not meet the above requirements. Scrap or waste material may be, this is not relating anymore to um, cars.
Okay.
Okay, and I can tell you from existing bylaws, at least looking at the uh, full table of contents, I don't see any reference to junk vehicles or inoperable vehicles.
I don't, I don't think there is anything in there Bob, because I think it, uh, that was um, they tried to put that in years ago and it never, nothing ever flowed. I'm not, I may be mistaken on that, but I'm not.
I don't think I, I think it, I think they tried an ordinance years ago and it didn't, uh, like a junk ordinance type thing or or unregistered vehicle. It never went through.
So it, I think you're right, I think you're right Mike, so um, and and it's not that I disagree that we need to do something with them, but geez, thirty days in that, and and then you start fine.
Bob, we can't hear you.
Uh, how about now? Any better?
Speaker.
Um.
Bob, can you hear us?
Let me uh.
Just one second Bob. Yeah, I can hear you now.
You can hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay.
Maybe we won't move it, we'll just leave it.
Yeah, I apologize, it seems that our speaker is um malfunctioning, we're probably gonna need to get a new one, but.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll just talk loud.
Alright Bob, could you please repeat what you just said, because we didn't hear any of it.
Okay, so uh, what I said was, I was going through the uh, the current bylaws and I couldn't see, I couldn't find them.
It's gone.
I don't know what to do, because this is broken clearly. Let's try it without the speaker again. Bob, can you speak?
Alright.
Say something please Bob.
Can you hear me? I am speaking.
We can't hear you. Megan, can you hear Bob?
Can you bring your computer in here please? Thank you, we're just gonna use her computer.
That's fine, just one second Bob.
Okay.
We're just gonna bring Megan's computer in here and do it.
Bob, for what it's worth, I can hear you.
I'm signing out.
Okay.
Okay.
You can hear me Fred?
Sorry guys.
I can.
So I think it might be their speaker in the room.
Yeah, I was, I wasn't able to raise, raise my hand.
Whatever, I'll just leave.
I just broke in.
Oh yeah. You weren't able to raise your hand, you said?
Okay, it's fine, we'll get him on, just give me that computer, thank you.
Alright, you're welcome Fred, we're trying to get everything back up and running where we can hear people. Can you hear us sir?
I can hear you. I can hear you. So I I can hear you fine.
I don't know what's going on.
I can hear you.
Hold on.
Just one second Bob.
Alright, say something.
Bob, can you say something?
Uh, yep, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, thank you Lord.
No, it's something is happening here, I don't know what it is.
We don't know what, we had to change.
Gonna recap a little.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I I'm sorry about that. Uh, you're, you guys are actually cutting in and out a little bit, and I don't know if that's my internet or if it's on your side. But um, uh, if you can hear me, then I'm gonna go ahead. Um, uh, and just a little bit of a recap, I think Mike uh, Mike confirmed and I'm, and I've got the current bylaws in front of me, and I can see that that we didn't have any regulation in this regard before. So uh, now going from no regulation at all, the uh, about uh, inoperable vehicles and how long you can have them, going to something that I think is very restrictive, and I think would add cost to our citizens. Uh, I think I I I do agree with the goal, which is to make a pound a a nicer looking place, but I think this is a little bit too close to a, a townwide homeowners association, so to speak. I I think it's a little overly restrictive, in fact, I think it's a lot overly restrictive, I mean if if and think about the, think about the scenario. Your car, uh, your registration expires, you're you're not registered. Yeah, you you're, you're working on a car or your son or your, your husband or somebody, or or you are working on a car, and it uh, uh, and it's gonna take you a while to get it fixed. Within thirty days, you're out, you're out of compliance. And uh, um, that just seems really restrictive. Um, uh, you know, I uh, I can think of cars that I've had, that I've actually got back onto the road after a year and a half of not being on the road. And uh, so maybe it's a, maybe it's some, some balance between how many cars and uh, and and how long, and maybe even what roads. I noticed it said, any state or town highway. If I understand it correctly, all of our town roads are town highways, right?
Means all roads.
Yeah, so it it basically says all roads. Um, uh, maybe something more restrictive on class one roads and on uh, state uh, on state highways, and something a little less restrictive once you get out. Um, I I I would think that there's some middle ground here.
I think it should be equal across the board for any place. I don't think it would be fair that somebody that lives on Route seven has one way, and then somebody that lives on Carpenter Hill Road has another way. I think it should be the same thing across the board to be fair to everybody. Um, for some reason in my head, maybe this goes back from years ago, I thought it was that you could not have no more than three unregistered vehicles in your yard, period. Doesn't, didn't have a limited time or anything.
I think that was a proposal Angie.
Oh, okay.
Right, I think the three, and I'm not, you know, don't quote me on it, but I'm pretty sure the three cars was a proposal um, on the table at one time.
Okay, cuz.
Maybe part of the junk ordinance.
I think it was part of the junk.
It was part, like, I remember a couple of years ago, like two thousand eighteen nineteen is when that was talked about.
I mean, that to me sounds more than fair. I have, you know, seen numerous cars and numerous homes sitting for years, which is fine, but I think no more than three unless you're a dealer.
I would, I I could agree with that. Um, uh, but it, but it's just the uh, the one car for thirty days just seemed really, really restrictive.
Okay.
I would, I I would agree with the three cars. Um.
And no time limit, I think it should be up to the owners, just as long as you don't exceed the three, as to how long it's gonna, I mean, like I said, I had an inoperable vehicle for a year and a half, and actually ended up getting it back on the road.
Mm-hmm, looks like some people have project cars, right?
Right.
Like they have a project car, they're.
Usually if they have a project car, it's usually in a garage or a building. So, we can put that down and maybe change it to three unregistered vehicles?
Well, it's in the process.
You can be, you're gonna, you would send it back to the planning commission with your suggestions.
For suggestion.
That's right.
Yeah.
And the planning commission meets next Wednesday.
With nineteen. Tuesday, Tuesday. I think.
Oh, I thought it was the nineteenth. I thought Megan sent me a message.
Oh, well.
It doesn't matter, we can just.
Whatever, we can figure that out.
Yeah.
I, I, I think that's the process.
Do you think a suggestion of three unregistered vehicles is suffice for everybody? Bob, would you agree to that?
I do agree to that.
Mike?
What, the three?
Unregistered, no more than three?
I would agree with that, yep, I would agree with that. And I think, but I think in in to, to um, put a little teeth in the, in the bite here, um, in the bark, I think we need to come up with a fine for, um, in a consequence if there are more than three cars. Because if we don't, if we don't have any teeth in our bark, what's the sense in having?
That doesn't happen here, that happens in an ordinance, correct, or does that?
No, I think you can put it, I think you can put it in the zoning bylaws. I'm not positive that, but I think you can put it in the bylaw.
So, right, that is a question. And can we add, do we add penalties in bylaws, or is that a separate document? That's your question.
Right. But I definitely think, I definitely think we put a fine in there so that, well, somebody who has four, five, seven, fifteen cars in their yard, we can find them.
Oh, here, yeah, they're in here, enforcement and penalties are on other sections as well, so.
I thought they were.
Yeah.
I thought so. So should we, should we talk about the fine right now, so that it has teeth in it?
I.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, my suggestion would be twenty-five dollars a car per month. You don't think that's?
Nope.
I think that's reasonable, I think we gotta steer clear, we've done too much of the excessive fining already, I I think.
I I disagree with that Bob, I think, I think if we're gonna clean up the town, and we're gonna, and we're gonna try to make it look presentable, then I think we have to have uh, of, you know, I I think we need a hundred dollar fine for a car, per month. Then they, then it gives them some incentive to give her the car. Other than that, twenty-five dollars, uh, twenty-five dollars.
Per car per month, so extrapolate that, that's over two hundred and fifty bucks a year per car. In fact, it's a, what is it, three hundred bucks a year per car? Per car, so if you have five cars, that's six hundred bucks a year that you're paying to have the car sit there. If it's a hundred bucks a month, it's twelve hundred per year per car. That's excessive.
Just so you guys know, you do not have to agree on anything right now.
No, we can just suggest.
Suggest, these are what we've considered, this is the range of considerations, and it goes back to the planning commission, it will come back to you guys again for another hearing.
Right.
And then to discuss it, just to make sure you guys are clear that you don't have to come to final decisions tonight, right?
No, Mike and I wanna have it out right now.
Go for it Ben.
I.
Go for it Ben.
We just have differing, differing opinions on that, and and we're always going to have. Um, on, and you know, we we both know that, we we both know that we're gonna have differing opinions on, on that whole thing, you know, cleaning up the town to, you know, I think we both want the same thing, I know we both want the same thing. We both want the town to be cleaned up and to look nicer. We just have different visions on how to get it done.
Uh, that's very true, I'm very concerned about unintended consequences.
Such as?
I don't have one for this, but uh, in a previous conversation with Mike, I had plenty. So I, it was about a different topic.
Okay.
Always you need to think them through, you can't just, and if I can't think of them on the spot, that doesn't mean there aren't any.
So I'm gonna put suggestion from twenty-five dollars to, what did you say Mike?
I said a hundred dollars.
A hundred dollars. A car.
Per month.
Just so you know, you can junk a car for three fifty right now, so if this car is no good to you, call somebody and scrap it.
Well, that's true, but I would assume that people don't, uh, if they're letting them sit there, then they, they've got some design on them. Uh, they're thinking about doing something with it, and I can use myself as an example. I had a year and a half of an inoperable, unregistered car that I got back on the road.
Okay.
Now, that's just one car, and if he, if it's at three, then I can still do it. But, but you know, just because it's only one for me, I'm not that handy. Somebody who's handy might be doing six or seven of them.
Then they should have a dealer license.
Exactly.
Well, what if they have ten kids?
You might wanna talk to our car dealer and see how much they pay to have what they have, and what they have to go through.
Yep, but that's a business.
So let's move on to anything else.
Um, I did notice, and I'm not sure if this is the place for it, but it certainly is in here, is the uh, is the the zoning and uh, and the zoning areas. One thing I've noticed with the zoning is we, uh, all of our industrial areas are already taken up, which means, uh, which means, and uh, and and you can say it's unrealistic, but, and perhaps it is, but that's not the point. Uh, if if a large employer wanted to come to our town and and set up shop here, we have no place to put them. Um, we have an industrial area that is, and and I think they're not even industrial areas anymore, I think they're multi-use, commercial, industrial, which, which means if uh, if if somebody looks at one of those places as a large, uh, for a large employer, uh, and it's already been snapped up for commercial, it's no longer industrial, and those gets, and those will probably be snapped up pretty quickly. Um, as soon as you designate a commercial, it's no longer industrial. No.
No.
Commercial is like, uh, well, like Dollar General or or uh.
Looks to me like.
Office space and uh.
Maybe I'm confusing with, I know that, I know that residential has always been allowed in industrial, so it's always, industrial's always been mixed use from what I understand.
No, it, uh, the, the whole term mixed use was started being used uh, several years ago, and there was a big push towards mixed use.
Well, I guess. Residential's allowed in industrial. That's what, that's what, I remember that from a meeting, I could be wrong on that, but I remember um, Jim Sullivan, I asked that question.
Yeah, that's very possible, uh, but that's, that really wasn't so much my point, my point was as I looked through our industrial areas, uh, you know, we've got the Mac molding building, which is, already has the Mac molding building. We have the wastewater treatment facility area, which already has the wastewater treatment facility, and I don't think we have another one, it used to be the racetrack area was industrial, and it became industrial commercial. Um, and then, and that means that if we ever had a large employer come to town or set, or show any interest, we don't have anywhere to put them.
But if that was the case Bob, couldn't we go and change?
Oh, I I see a hand up.
Um, okay, just one second, sorry, it's hard because we're only using the one. Um. What hand do you see up?
Uh, Fred Miller.
Oh, yeah, it was literal hand.
Yeah, literal.
Go ahead, um, I'm gonna ask you to unmute, go ahead Fred, you gonna mute yourself?
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't able to raise my hand earlier, or I wasn't able to find the controls for Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't able to raise my hand earlier or I wasn't able to find the controls for. Desperately raising my hand.
That's okay, hon, go right ahead.
Yeah, um, well, according to, uh, the, the new bylaws, all of our commercial designations are gone. Everything's gonna be, um, village.
The village allows for.
It's gonna come, let's take everything. Well, what it doesn't allow is manufacturing.
Commercial allow for manufacturing prior?
No.
No.
Well, that brings me to another subject. Um, section. Three. Point one oh. In, in the old bylaw.
I don't have the old ones in front of me. Could you read it then?
Uh, it's, it's quite, quite long. Um, but the title of it is for transfer of development rights.
Okay.
Where is, if, um. An area is designated in a certain way and used in a different way than its designation. There's a possibility of transferring the developer rights to, like, say, if the industrial. Is, is used by some other form, like residential or. Commercial or something like that. You might find a suitable. Area. And like I say, in a, in a commercial designation that, that would be able to suit that industrial use. Um, but that's been completely, that section has been completely taken out and replaced with. Um, planned unit development regulation, which, um, really deals a lot with cluster housing. So.
So, uh, you did.
So, so, so in the industry, then, then basically erased from the board. Commercial, the commercial designations are gone. All that along Route seven, completely gone now. It's been turned into, um, residential, which would be mixed use.
A village or residential?
It's, it's, it's village, which is.
Village is commercial and residential.
Yeah, yeah. But, but by taking away all the commercial and forcing it into, in with village. What you're setting up is the case where some, some little commercial enterprise is gonna have to go through a whole lot, I believe, to, to get permits. Depending on how many houses are springing up in that area.
Um. Brad, what was the section you were talking about in the old bylaws?
Three, three point one.
Do you have a page number or no?
Yeah, three point ten point one, um, in the, in the old bylaw.
Page six, Fred?
Yeah, Mike found it.
It's page six.
Transfer of development rights.
Yeah. Yeah.
First, three point ten point one is, uh.
And now, yeah. In, in, in the new one, three point ten point one is now changed to planned unit development.
So, um, well, I hate to use the term, but it sounds like, it sounds like we're pushing toward bedroom community.
Exactly. That, that's kinda, I was kinda trying to avoid that, but. It, it definitely looks that way.
I think, I, I'm not totally positive with this. Uh, this may be something we should look into. But I think the state. Has re-designated. The Route seven, three forty-six corridor along the Housick River. Into a floodway. Versus the flood plain. And that restricts, um, anything going on. That whole corridor right there. Even above and beyond what the town would, would put in place. And I'm, I'm pretty sure of that. Uh, matter of fact, I'm almost a hundred percent positive. Um, I was talking with, um. A person who owns some property in that area, and that's exactly what they told me. Um, but I haven't read it. I haven't seen it, so I'm not gonna swear to it.
There's a map on page eighty-three that shows the, uh, floodway. Uh, and I'm not quite sure what AE is, but AE and floodway, and then there's AEA. And point two percent chance of flooding. So those are the four flood zone designations. Uh, I'll give you the, uh.
You know, we have a person that owns a racetrack who, it, it for him right now, it's a, it's not a residential. Only property. It's not a village property. It's a, I think it's a commercial.
Yep, and it.
And, and that's gonna be, uh, going with, uh, eliminating that, it's gonna be kind of impactful to him. In the, in the least. But also, all along, get away from the racetrack, the whole Route seven corridor from. Um, the, the Bennington line. South. The commercial zone is gone. There's no, there's no commercial designation at all. Nothing strictly commercial.
Yeah, so I think you're right. There, the map on page eighty-two of the proposed bylaws. Shows twenty twenty zoning and it only has five designations. Uh, rural, residential one, residential two, forest, industrial and village.
Just one second, Bob.
Do you, if you don't, if the, this is for you to take or leave, but I can, cause I was in the meetings where all of this was discussed. Like in depth and depth and depth. So I'm gonna pass on to you what Jim Sullivan explained about what a village designation is versus. I mean, not the designation, sorry, village zone. Um. Commercial always was a mixed use. It's just a word change. So. Commercial always included residential use as well. It was always a mixed use. Village is just another name for that. It is a mixed use. It is for commercial and residential. So the commercial zone is the village. Village zoning is commercial zoning. That's according to what I learned in those meetings when they were working on this. Um, if you wanna investigate that further, perhaps I am wrong about that. Um, but that is what I remember very much from those conversations.
My, my question is, under, under TDR, uh, transfer and development rights. Theoretically, you could, you could go take an industrial. Situation and put it in a kind of commercial, if it, it could, it could fit. Where. I don't think it's gonna be doable. If you, if you get rid of TDR completely. It'll, it'll be ever be doable to, to. In one of those village, those designations to put, to put a manufacturing, whether it's rather large or small.
We should ask, um.
We should ask Jim Sullivan.
I was just gonna say to come Thursday maybe, and if you would like, I can reach out to him and maybe he can. Speak to that in a way that I certainly cannot, you know, and that may answer your questions, or he may give you a suggestion of alternate wording. You, you know, right?
Right, so, uh, and, and to make it clear, commercial and industrial are two different things. And it, and they, and they are. We used to have industrial zones and, and, and the industrial zones that we have. Are strictly industrial. Um, but they're already snapped up.
Right.
Um, it, it's the, the, the thought and the discussion before was about making industrial. And slash commercial and not, and doing away with industrial alone. Um, and I remember that because that's, uh, uh, it was only after thinking about it over a long period of time that I realized what the risk was. And that was that as things get snapped up for commercial, you have nowhere else to put a manufacturing plant or something else that, that might wanna set up shop here.
Well, that's, that's not true when the new bylaws, Bob. In the village district. On, on appendix A, under land use matrix. That's where that all falls. So in the village district, you can have with a conditional permit, light manufacturing and warehousing.
Light, that's light manufacturing, but you're not gonna have any, you know, any potential for a large scale manufacturer in panel again ever. Based on the bylaws.
Yeah, it's, uh, I mean, the qualifiers kind of, kind of take it away. Light being the qualifier. Well, hang on. What are these heading, headings? So the X means it's not allowed, is I'm assuming.
Right, X, right, X is not permitted. A is permitted with administrative approval.
Billy, industrial.
E is conditional and SP is permitted with type plan approval.
Right, so manufacturing. Is not allowed. Uh, is only allowed in village designation. Is that right? And it's, and it's a C, whatever that means.
Light, light manufacturing is village and industrial. Manufacturing is industrial only. In my opinion, that's where it should be. But that's, you know.
I guess the question is, could, could we find a, uh, a site in. Powell Center on the way to Bankton that could qualify as an industrial site? And since we're, since we're changing. We're changing some designations, possibly change, change a portion of land up there that could qualify as industrial. Just to give ourselves an option in the future. Should an opportunity arise, depending on, um, which way the wind blows in Washington.
And even here, even, even here where it's designated, it's designated as C, meaning conditional permitting. And I'm not sure what the condition is. It doesn't say.
Well, the conditional permitting is whatever the Development Review Board puts on their permit. Is the conditions that DRB puts on the permit. There, there may be zero conditions. There may just be a permitted action through the DRB. But, you know, they may, the DRB can come in and say, you know, you had so much parking, you have, you know, here's your access. You have lighting that, you know, those would be the conditions on a conditional permit. A conditional use permit.
Like screen.
Okay, so, so then manufacturing is only permitted. Conditionally in industrial zones. It is not permitted in residential one, residential two, village or flooding. Only in industrial and there it's conditional.
Right.
Which, which, which leads me back to, I'm concerned about our lack of industrial zoning.
We have industrial zoning, some.
Yeah, I, and I itemize them. We have the wastewater treatment facility, which is already being used. The, uh, the MAC molding building. And I believe the only other one used to be the racetrack, but I think that's it now. I think those are the only two we have.
One, one possible thing also could be, could be considered is, uh, allow no, no, uh. Uh, warehousing in an industrial. Zone. So if that MAC molding building ever, ever stops being a warehouse, it doesn't, there's no chance of doing that again.
No, because that's, that's a conditional use spread in industrial. Manufacturing warehousing is a conditional use in industrial zone. On the, on the new land use matrix.
Yeah.
I, I unfortunately on the Route seven corridor. Our options. Are driven more by the state because all the way through Pono Center. Um. It's, it's wetlands. You're, you're not gonna get to state. Uh, uh, I, I really would find it hard to believe, you know, I won't say never, but. Don't believe you'd ever get to state to permit. A manufacturing facility. From Barber Pond Road all the way to the Bennington Line.
Well, there's, there are certain structures have been put in, in, in those areas with, with mounding. It seems like, uh, you, even what it used to be the old.
I don't think it's the mound system that, that I would worry about because you have the septic. I don't. Something, you know, up through, from, from the Barber Pond Road corridor. I, 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 it's the wetlands. I mean, and the only reason I say that, Fred, is because, um. As a zoning administrator, I've had some people. Um. Call me about, um, the moccasin shop, the old moccasin shop, just. It was market. And some of the ideas and projects that they had in mind, which were not industrial by any stretch.
Right.
Um, the, the state kinda nixed them right, right in the beginning because of the wetlands up through there.
Yeah, which, which, which in night, around nineteen sixty, the state created. When they, something with the highway.
The state is not our friend.
Yeah, yeah, they, they, they did, they, uh, did a highway with, with not proper drainage or something that created. A swamp that looks, looks like hell coming through town.
Oh, yeah.
It's not attractive at all.
Well, the state is, the state is our friend in there, that's for sure, but fortunately, they supersede whatever we say.
Right.
We have a pond and cactails. You can't even take the cactails out of our.
Yeah, right.
Our property.
Because it's not, it's not necessarily a natural wetland. It's, it was created by. Uh. A flaw in the state's thinking. Planning.
So. I, I think, uh, I think from looking at these maps, there's, uh, I'm, 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 I, I'm very concerned. And maybe it would be a good idea to have Jim talk to us. Uh, about the, uh, about what, what panel now looks like. I mean, it's, it's just, there, there is no place. There is no place to put a large employer of manufacturer. Um, there just isn't. We have less than we had before. And it, it, this just looks to me like a, uh. Uh, that, it, uh, it, it doesn't look to me like it's very welcoming to, to businesses, certainly not the large employers. Uh, we might be focusing on, uh, you know, it's a small business, but even there. The best thing you can do for small business is a large employer.
Bob, um, Jim Winchester has his hand up. I'm gonna ask him to unmute. Go ahead, Jim. If you can. Maybe he accidentally has his hand up. I don't know.
Well, let me see if I can unmute him. Can, can someone else unmute him?
Oh, no, I'm the host, so I'm asking him to unmute and it's not, he's not doing it, so. We'll come back to Jim. If at any moment you wanna unmute, go for it. He might not know he has his hand up. Right. Oh, who's that? Oh, no, that's Megan. Okay. Keep going, I'm sorry. I don't think there are any other hands up.
Megan, do you have your hand up?
No, she's just gonna.
Well, I, I think we could, I think that's something we can suggest to the planning commission is to revisit that a little bit and send it back to them. I mean, I, I think we can hash it out all my long. I think we, you know.
And I can ask Jim to come next to our next hearing, if you'd like to answer questions.
Sure.
Okay.
And I think that's, uh, I think, uh, what Mike said is, uh, is, is good to, uh, we can give the feedback back to the planning commission and, uh. Um, and maybe they've got better ideas. And better knowledge on how we can, how we can make sure that we have some place to put a large employer or a manufacturer if they were to come to town. And we wanna make sure that it's there and not restricted. I, I, I would like panel to be known as a place that would welcome that. Um, even if the state doesn't.
So beyond that conversation, uh, another thing I wanted to ask about.
You did now. Go ahead, Jim.
Okay, I'm just wondering if we're missing some places here. Uh, there's ten acres next to my store. Uh, there's a big, uh, the ballpark there on the other side of the railroad tracks. And that area in there, uh. It's, uh, pretty big area. Uh, we've gone all over, all over this quite a bit with the planning board. And, uh, I think you're missing a few things. But I'm not sure that, uh, anybody really is interested to come here with, uh, a large facility. Uh. You know, you might go, the river down three forty-six and the, uh, panel center is wetlands. Uh, looking for land in panel centers, pretty tough. Uh, but I think if you go for the DRB. With some kind of a plan and you are a business looking. Panel definitely is open for business and, uh, I think the DRB is open for business. So between the planning board and the DRB, I think you'd get a better, you know. It's, it's like opening up the, the Nautis Wood, uh. That was laying there. You come before the board and, uh, you, you. They'll accommodate you. I'm just, uh, wondering, uh. You're wasting, you're not wasting a lot of time, but you're opening a lot of, of ideas that have been discussed for. Five, six, seventeen years with the planning board. I'll leave you on that. Come before the planning board.
Thank you, Jim.
All right, and, uh. Uh, thanks, Jim. And, and looking at the map, though, I don't see the areas you're talking about.
From my store, across from the store, you drive by it every day and you go to.
Not across.
No, by the racetrack.
By the racetrack.
And next to me is, uh, a pretty, pretty big piece of land. Uh, it's, it's ten acres. It's next to the, uh, where the dog, uh, place is. Up in there. But what you can do is, you know, what, what they can't do in Williamstown, you can do in panel. You just have to have some small businesses that need, the dog place is a wonderful place. I mean, it brings in a lot of people. And, uh, and then next to that is a big open field. Uh. I'm trying to think, well, not, not questioning who owns it, but, uh, it's, it's, uh. And, and down by the racetrack, those two people, two pieces of property are, they, they're wide open. I'd like to see a nice truck stop in there, which we need badly.
Which would, uh, uh.
Believe you on that.
So, and, and maybe if it was, uh, if it was shown that way on the map, then, uh, then it would, it would certainly answer some of the questions. Uh, but as you were talking, blowing the map up to get a closer view of it, and the only thing I see two purple sections and that's it.
Yeah. Well, I don't know, you know, it's, it's been discussed a lot and, uh, it's open, hey. Water and septic is, uh, available down, you know, down the three forty-six corridor. And, uh, hey, our best friend in panel right now is the post office. Who wants to go on Spring Street in Williams Town? I'll leave you on that.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else have anything to add?
I think, I think one thing. That we need to, and I, and I know the planning commissions, I'm not trying to step on the planning commissions' toes at all. Cause I know this is on their agenda for their next meeting. Is, um, and I know Megan Randall has talked to Jim Sullivan. I talked to Jim, um, a couple of months ago about this. Um, but in our new bylaws, we don't have any provisions for tiny houses. There's, there's really nothing at all in there. Um, and I know, um. Megan and I both reached out to Jim, like I said, Jim's idea of what you. Any other residents. Um, I just wanna make sure that when the planning commission talks about this and I plan on going to their meeting next. Tuesday or whatever day it is. I wanna make sure that. We address. Not just a tiny house that's on a foundation, but one that's on, uh, that's mobile or on an axle. Um, because I, I think that's a potential, it's a potential loophole. So I just wanna make sure that we have that addressed, that if somebody puts one onto a trailer, well, they still have to follow the same zoning. Um, regulations, they have to have the sewer permit and they have to have everything in place. Whether it's on a foundation or on a trailer and mobile. I think that's, I think that's a big key. I, I think that could be a loophole if we don't address it.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything to add?
I think Megan's got her hand up.
All right, let's see. Megan, do you have your hand up? Oh, you're unmuted, Megan, so you should be able to just speak. Hmm, we don't hear you if you're talking. Let's go to.
Not sure she can hear us. She's looking down.
No. I don't even see her anymore. Her hand's up and she's unmuted, so. Megan, I'm going to, I don't wanna give my phone number on this.
Well, you, uh, enable the chat maybe and, and type for a message.
Megan, if you wanna talk and you're struggling with getting your stuff to work, um, if you could stick your phone number. Oh, there you are. Yeah, I can see you now. If you wanna put your phone number in the chat, um, I will call you and put you on speaker here.
I don't know if she's seeing the same thing, but when I go to chat, it says disabled.
It. I don't see that, okay. Boy. You cannot move a video while someone has their hand raised, okay? Um. I'm not seeing that as being disabled, but ma- me, uh, Megan, can you come look at this for me? Because I'm not, I have to hold the microphone into the side of the computer. Thank you. Did you disable it?
No.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
Well, um, sorry, that's just what mine says. So I'm assuming anybody who dialed in would see the same thing. Oh, there we go. Oh, there we go, now 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 it looks like it's.
Megan Randall, send me your, oh, is she gone now? She might be sure, maybe she's trying to come back in.
Well, that's possible. Now, her her video was freezing as well, so it might have.
Out of range, really, okay. Well, oh, she's back, so let's do it again.
I don't see her.
Oh, I just, well, I just let her in, so give her a sec, here she come. Okay, I'm asking you to unmute, Megan. And you are unmuted, go ahead.
I I was just having trouble hearing. I wasn't getting any sound, so. I just. Did you want? So the meeting starts in a few minutes, the uh the public meeting hearing?
We've been in the meeting since six o'clock, Megan.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's okay, we're gonna have another one on Thursday at six o'clock.
Okay, I'll attend, I'm gonna leave this one then. Okay, thank you.
I'll send you a reminder, Megan, okay?
Okay.
All right, sorry about that, ma'am. Is there anybody else out there that has their hands up as a question or a concern?
There's.
Fred. Please say your name, full name, please.
Yeah, Fred Miller. Again, um, I, yeah, I don't, for some reason, I don't have the controls for raising my hand. The the electronic control, um the one last thing I wanted to ask about was in the matrix, the new matrix. Private hunting and fishing camp. Um in the old matrix, they were permitted in R R two. Or one, not permitted in village, not permitted in industrial, not permitted in commercial. But permitted in. The forest zone. In the new matrix, not permitted anywhere but forest zone, and that's with administrative approval. Um was administrative approval a part of the process in in our existing? Bylaws, or is this, is this something that's going to be changing?
I believe that's changing.
If so, why?
I'm not familiar with that section, but I'd write that question down, it's another Jim Sullivan. What was the question, I'm sorry? It's about, is it about literal camps?
Yeah, private hunting and fishing camps.
Okay, so.
It's taken away a lot of permitted areas and designated, the only place permitted is on forest zone. And that is that is now requiring administrative approval.
Does that mean a site visit, a site? Mike, you know?
It doesn't.
Or does it mean sign off by zoning administrator?
Right, it means, it means that the zoning administrator. I'm pretty positive, means the zoning administrator can just approve or not approve based on whatever. The person was feeling on that day. You know, that's a great question, Fred, I missed that part.
Yeah, 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 it's just uh because I don't think, oh, you you the zoning administrator, has anybody had to get your approval before?
No.
No, right.
All all we've. To be honest with you, I've never, I have not uh even had an application for a for a camp.
Right.
Had some, um, I've had some inquiries about it.
Yeah.
Looked it up. Um, it was basically, there's there's criteria to follow in our old bylaws for a hunting camp. Or a camp that doesn't, doesn't necessarily say hunting or fishing. But I I think this is probably, unless I'm seeing it differently, which I skim this. It looks like if somebody just wanted to have a horse riding camp. In in R R one or R R two, where there was no facilities, you know, where it was a camp. The private, the hunting and fishing kind of. Limits, in my opinion, it limits what you can do. I mean, somebody may just want to have a camp to go to 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 hang out.
Oh, yeah, yeah, drink beer, drink some beers.
Just go there and look at the stars.
Yeah, right.
Only in the forest, so I think that needs, definitely needs adjustment there, that's a great catch.
Alright, thanks.
Uh because I missed that and I only and then.
Right, right.
I only made in the forest zone too, I I'm fine up there, but. Yeah, but on on R R one and R R two, honestly, that, yeah, that that definitely needs to be changed because. A farmer that wants to have a camp to go to to get away from the house can't even do it on.
Oh, yeah.
So that, that's a definite no for me.
Right. Yep, I agree.
I mean, I I wouldn't have a problem, I guess, if there was, you know, administrative approval, because that's kind of what you. Have the zoning administrator for anyways. You know what I mean, that's that's what my my job sort of is, I mean, I don't think it has to be.
You know, training people who are not used to having having to go through that process to all of a sudden have to do it. Uh you know, the question would be why, for one.
Right, well, that's right.
Well, and remember, we just taking these fees for everything, so the more that we take on. That we have to approve for our citizens to to do, the higher our fees go and the more they have to pay to do stuff.
Right.
It just uh, you know, we should only be requiring what's necessary, not to. And I know that what's necessary is going to be different, if you ask a hundred people what's necessary, you'll get a hundred different answers.
So Fred, I I want to clarify something because I didn't even pick this up till just now. So in our old bylaws. It was, it was a conditional permit, not permitted, um so on, you know, permitted use, um. And, you know, then permitted with a site plan. In in the new one, the administrative approval. Appears to be just another word, some kind of big long word, a couple of them for a permitted use.
Right.
That's that's all, I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that, I mean. Which which is the same thing is that, you know.
Which comes with a fee.
Well, it comes, it'll come with taxes.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but it's still, you know, I I mean, you don't want to, you don't want to allow somebody to build, you know, somebody that owns. Twenty acres somewhere, you don't want to to allow them to build just a whole bunch of camps out there that they're renting.
Oh, yeah, right.
You want to have, you want to have a permitted use, you don't want to just have free willy nilly, I mean, you know, Bob, on your property, I wouldn't want to let you be built. Fifty camps up there and.
Oh, yeah. I'm 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 just thinking of like the small lean to, that may maybe grows a little bit over the years, but, you know.
Right.
You could handle that with numbers too, and plus that becomes a business once you start charging people. Um so I I mean, there's, there's, there's other ways. Uh and there's ways to let people do what they do what they want with their property up to a point and then start charging them, I mean. Uh I'm not reading fifty camps, I'm reading a camp.
I think, you know, I think it just, I think we just need to change it to a permitted use in R R one and R R two and then. And then I, I think, I I think, are you comfortable with that, Fred? You're the one that caught it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't own big land or ever plan on putting up a camp, I don't know if they have to pay a pay a fee for that permit or or not or. I don't know the process, I just, I just caught the difference comparing the two.
No.
Make matrices, you know.
Well, and the the flip side, the flip side of unpermitted stuff, Bob, is when when you don't have a permit. For um or something that's going on, how does the, how do the listers know? That that building went up, if you don't have a permit for it. How how taxed, and I'm using a camp as an example. Up on the top of my piece of property, I put a camp up there, the only way you can see it is with an airplane, how how are the listers going to know that that camp? Is there? Unless I come in and tell them.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, that's that's a, that's a good point, but then then we just increase the fees for doing that too. So uh so now it costs more to get taxed more, so that's where I'm having some trouble with the fees as well. So, but that's a different topic.
Yeah, I guess, I guess probably with the permitting is also, as long as it didn't get to do, like, all of a sudden you have a minimum land requirement for that. You know, somebody might own three, three to seven acres up on land, supposedly landlocked on the mountain. But they can get to it and they and they can have a camp. Uh but if, you know, if all of a sudden now we we have a minimum lot size of ten acres, then they're then they're put out, so. I think as soon as you start getting into that business, that's that's when things start start squeezing people more and more.
I think there's a couple of things, let me, let me see if I'm hearing everyone correctly. Um, one is that in our current bylaws, camps are already permitted use, that's not a new addition, correct? I think Mike's looking that up now, and then secondly. Structures that are under a certain size don't require, already do not require a permit, correct? So if you're just doing a little tiny lean to, like a small, like a shed size, then you just build the thing. But if you're talking about building a camp that has, you know, stuff going to it, then maybe it's something else.
And and the the size, the size of the building not requiring a permit. Went from a hundred and forty-four square feet or under to three hundred, I'm pretty sure.
So it went up.
So the the size is.
Became less regulated.
Right, less regulated there. Right.
Well, I'm all for that. Less regulated.
That's all I had for tonight, but you know, I'll I'll probably have a few things at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Fred.
You're welcome.
That our next meeting is this coming Thursday.
It's the thirteenth.
Thirteenth at six P M.
And it's at six P M, yeah. And I put a notice up on Facebook for mine and I will boost it again.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
And I will, oh, as soon as we're, we end here, I will write to Jim Sullivan and ask him if he might people do attend by Zoom. To be available for answering questions about definitions and things like that, all right, excellent.
Any other questions or concerns? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Can I have a second?
Go ahead, Ryan.
Okay, any further discussion? Bob?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Ronnie? Angie, I, thank you, everybody, have a good night, see you Thursday.